Everybody updating everything.
This evening we have with us Reverend Bobby Alger from Crossroads Community Church who will deliver an invocation.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us. We thank you for the privilege of living in this great nation. We ask you, Lord, to grant wisdom to the leaders of our nation and in the times in which we live, grant them understanding to understand the times and make proper decisions. Lord, tonight I pray blessing upon this group that is gathered tonight for a particular purpose and agenda. I pray, Father, that decisions would be made and understood that would not only affect our present time but future generations. Lord, I pray a blessing upon this board of supervisors that have sacrificed their time to be public servants. I pray, Lord, that you would grant them success as they have given back to their community in this way. And so, Father, thank you for taking, allowing us to take this time just to acknowledge you. We invite you into this meeting. Be present as it unfolds, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Vice Chairman DeHaven, you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Stand and face the flag for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of the agenda, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is one change, and that is to add as item six under county officials, a resolution of appreciation for Brenda Lloyd Vance, clerk of the Winchester Frederick County General District Court, and this is on the occasion of her retirement. That is it.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Supervisor DeHaven is her second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
By Supervisor Lofton. Any discussion? Hearing now, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The agenda is adopted. Consent agenda, Mr. Williams.
We have item C, proclamation, Ray, April 1st through 17th, 2015 is Local Government Education Week. Item E, approval to sign engagement letter for FY 2015 Annual Audit for Frederick County, Virginia Regional Jail and Economic Development Authority. Item six under county officials, the Vance Resolution. Item G, the Public Safety Committee Report. Item H, the Joint Finance Committee Report. Item I, the Human Resources Committee Report. And item O, a road resolution for Rutherford Crossing Milton Ray Drive Extension. That is it.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Supervisor Wells is her second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing now, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The consent agenda is approved. Mr. Williams, did anyone sign up for citizen comments?
No, sir.
Are there any board of supervisors' comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to the minutes of the regular meeting, January 28th, 2015.
Please for approval, Mr. Chairman, as submitted.
Motion by Supervisor DeHaven is her second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing now, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Minutes of the regular meeting, January 28th, 2015 are approved, next to the Budget Work Session, February 4th, 2015.
Move approval as submitted.
We have a motion by Supervisor Hess is her second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing now, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the Budget Work Session, February 4th, 2015 are approved, next is the Special Meeting, February 11th, 2015.
Move for approval as submitted, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Lofton is her second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing now, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Minutes of the Special Meeting, February 11th, 2015 are approved, and lastly is the Budget Work Session, February 11th, 2015.
Move for approval as submitted, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Lofton is her second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing now, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the Budget Work Session, February 11th, 2015 are approved. Next is a special presentation for Employee of the Month Award, and Vice Chairman DeHaven, if you'll join me. The Employee of the Month Award Program recognizes the county's employees as an important and valuable resource. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, it is my pleasure to present Alisa Scott for consideration as Employee of the Month for February 2015. Alisa serves in the Information Technology Department. Alisa has worked with the county's best interests in mind to develop necessary relationships with, which allow the purchasing process to operate as efficiently as possible. Alisa has worked long hours to put in much hard work for the IT operations as they continue to increase in efficiency as a direct result of all of her involvement. IT projects continue to be completed on schedule and within budget constraints. Alisa achieved the highly sought Project Management Professional certification from the Project Management Institute. Alisa is therefore being awarded, rewarded for her hard work and dedication. I will now entertain a motion to approve Alisa Scott as Employee of the Month for February 2015.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Supervisor Hess is her second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Congratulations. Alisa Scott is hereby recognized as a Frederick County Employee of the Month for February 2015. The Board of Supervisors extends its gratitude to you for your outstanding performance and dedicated service and wishes you continued success in future endeavors. All right. Next on the agenda are the committee appointments. Local Emergency Planning Committee, we have a recommendation before you. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the names submitted for the Local Emergency Planning Committee appointment.
Okay, that is Kendra Sowers. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing now, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Kendra Sowers is hereby appointed to the Local Emergency Planning Committee. Next is the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I don't think we have a candidate yet, do we?
Yes, sir.
Is that your nominee? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I knew you had one here, and I just misunderstood what it was for. Excuse me. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend recommending the appointment of Jeremy McDonald to the Board of Zoning Appeals, representing Back Creek District. Mr. McDonald's a young farmer in the area, and with his background, I thought he would make a good representative and bring some diversity to that board.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Discussion. Hearing now, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Jeremy McDonald is hereby, well, is recommended for appointment by the Circuit Court Judge to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Historic Resources Advisory Board, Red Butter, are we ready?
Yes, sir.
Conservation Easement Authority, Mr. Fisher?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Green is willing to continue to serve, so I would move for his reappointment, Brian J. Green, to the Conservation Easement Authority.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven. Discussion. Hearing now, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Brian J. Green is reappointed to the Conservation Easement Authority. Historic Resources Advisory, Stonewall, are we ready?
Not yet, sir.
All right. Sanitation Authority, we're not ready. That's it. All right. Next is a reimbursement resolution in reference to the Frederick County Middle School replacement. Mr. Williams, you handling?
I will do so, Your Honor. Sir. I have Mr. Collins issue there. Frederick County Public Schools has requested this. They indicate that they have sufficient cash balances to cover expenses on the Frederick County Middle School project until fall 2015, and therefore will not be participating in the spring 2015 VPSA bond sale. As a safe card, though, approval of the resolution is requested. The resolution allows for the use of local dollars prior to the fall bond sale for the subsequent reimbursement of expended local dollars with bond proceeds. And the resolution is in your materials.
Any questions? All right, hearing now, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move adoption of the resolution.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing now, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. The resolution is approved. All right, next, Parks and Recreation Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Parks and Recreation Commission met on February 10th, 2015. At that meeting, they voted to modify the bylaws to read, "Commission members are required to attend 75% of held commission meetings per year. Members not meeting this requirement will be notified by written correspondence from the chairman regarding their lack of, their lack to attendance." This was passed four to two. I would move that the, I guess it's a motion for the board to approve the amendment to the Parks and Rec Commission's bylaws.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Discussion. Hearing now, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion passes.
That concludes my report.
Mr. Chairman, there are actually two items under that on their agenda. It's a tad confusing the way it was presented, but there's a two separate bylaw revisions.
I believe you spoke to the second one, correct?
Correct.
Supervisor Collins, could you back up to the first one?
I'm sorry, you're right. There's only one highlighted spot, so I apologize. The majority of members present in person at any duly constituted meeting shall have the full authority of the commission, accept the amendment of the, of these bylaws, and provide that over 50% of the members may constitute a quorum.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing now, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion passes. That concludes your report, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, next is Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance Committee met on February the 18th at 8:00 a.m. The Department of Social Services requested general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $5,200. This amount represents an insurance claim for a loss of a vehicle. The committee recommends approval, and I'd so move.
You have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes.
Item number two is the EDA Executive Director requesting EDA and general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $150,000. This amount represents an incentive to O.N. Minerals Kimstone Company. The committee recommends approval, and I'd so move.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes.
Item number three is the Fire and Rescue Chief requesting general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $32,811. This amount represents a 50-50 match grant for the purchase of bariatric equipment. The committee recommends approval, and I'd so move.
A motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes.
Item number four, the Fire and Rescue Chief requesting general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $6,105.64. This amount represents an insurance claim for damage to a vehicle. The committee recommends approval, and I'd so move.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes.
Item number five is the Fire and Rescue Chief requesting general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $310,530 to cover overtime expenses through the end of fiscal year 2015. $300,000 of this request represents local funds, remain to represent a grant for hazmat training. The committee delays action, awaiting further information of current year savings and salaries in vacant positions. Item number six is the NRADC Superintendent requesting NRADC Fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $358,000. This amount represents overtime and inmate medical cost. And this item's been approved by the jail authority. The committee recommends approval, and I'd so move.
A motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes.
concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next is a public hearing on a proposed declaration as surplus and disposal of real property known as the Robinson School located at 2400 Roosevelt Boulevard. Who's handling?
Take it. Go ahead. The Frederick County School Board previously declared the property known as the Robinson School that's located at 2400 Roosevelt Boulevard and 2479 Paper Mill Road within the city limits of the city of Winchester a surplus. The school board had requested the Board of Supervisors authorize the school board to sell the property and apply the proceeds to existing construction. The Board of Supervisors at its November 12th, 2014 meeting considered the request and ultimately voted to transfer the property to the Board of Supervisors for disposition by the Frederick County Economic Development Authority. Before the board can transfer the property to the EDA, a public hearing on the disposition is required, and the hearing is scheduled for this evening.
Other questions, Mr. Williams? If they're not, then we will conduct a public hearing. This is a public hearing on a proposed declaration as surplus and disposal of the real property known as the Robinson School located at 2400 Roosevelt Boulevard and 2479 Paper Mill Road, Winchester, Virginia, and identified by the City of Winchester property identification numbers 291-1-21A and 291-1-3A. This hearing is pursuant to the Virginia Code, Section 15.2-1800, and the purpose of the hearing is to receive public comment on the decoration of the property as surplus and approval of the transfer of the property to the Economic Development Authority of the County of Frederick, Virginia. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this proposed declaration? Seeing no, close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I'd move that the board declare a surplus, the Robinson School property, and transfer it to the EDA for disposal.
A motion by Supervisor DeHaven is her second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Our next item is a public, or a Planning Commission public hearing, the 2015-2016 Capital Improvements Plan. Go ahead, Mr. Reddick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We're here this evening for the public hearing for the 2015-2016 Capital Improvements Plan. Of course, this CIP is a prioritized list of capital projects requested by the various county departments and agencies. And I'll take a moment to recognize those folks. Many of them are here with us here this evening that worked on putting this CIP plan together. The plan is part of, or if you will, a component of the 2030 Comprehensive Plan. And as in previous years, the CIP continues to reinforce the connection between the Comprehensive Plan, future rezonings, and also is a tool that can be used in future budget exercises. This year's CIP contains 88 projects. It's generally been the same in recent years, a little higher last year, excuse me, last year and a little lower the year before. Now, the CIP is quite an in-depth document, and it includes, the one table that includes all of the different projects from the different agencies, public schools, fire and rescue, Parks and Recreation, county administration, the airport, the library, and fire and rescue companies, of course. If the board is interested, we can look at any of the projects in detail, but there's a description of each of the projects contained within this CIP that supports all of the items listed in the table. In addition to the table that identifies the projects and the anticipated costs associated with them, the CIP contains four maps, the first one being the general government facilities and their location, the second map being those that are identified by Frederick County Public Schools for existing, future, and anticipated schools. The third map is one from the county Parks and Recreation, which does the same thing, of course, for county park facilities. And the final map is the county's transportation CIP map, which includes those funded projects and those unfunded projects that are, again, listed in the table. Take a moment, if we can, here to just recognize some of the projects that are moving forward from last year's CIP. And I know that members of the board had some questions about how could we identify those a little bit more so in the CIP we could see what was different from previous years. So hopefully, the additional document we provided provided that additional clarification. But some of those projects that are moving forward include the Gainesboro Middle School, several parcels in and around the airport, because the airport authority has purchased those for future expansion possibilities, and of course, there's the safety zones that they need around the airport. And finally, the fire and rescue Round Hill Station, which is under construction right now, has moved off the CIP. This is a little illustration of what I provided, again, which identifies the new projects and then those that are moved off. This one just, of course, recognized the Dow J. Howard Center, which is a new project there under the school systems request. Some newer modified projects under county administration. I'll point out the Joint Judicial Center renovation and the new facility, again, a two-phase project that has been included. Of course, the county and the city have been working together with the court system to accommodate the growth in the court system. Under Parks and Recreation, the number one priority is the pool complex renovation. Second priority is Snowden Bridge Park development, and rising towards the top of their list is the Indoor Aquatic Center. That facility recognizes the continuing collaboration and potential that exists when the different agencies work together and identify some co-located sites. Previously mentioned, the Dow J. Howard Center addition. Under Public Works, an additional project in this year's is the Clearbrook Convenience Center site. Of course, that's risen to the top of the list as there is a need to relocate the current facility from its present location. Additional projects, if you will, that have moved towards the top of the list under the airport, their new general aviation terminal has topped the list. It's always been on their CIP, but again, they feel it's a priority this year. Fire and rescue requests remain the same from the different individual companies. And this evening, we're looking for the Board of Supervisors to endorse the 2015-2016 Capital Improvement Plan, previously gone to the ComPlan Committee who endorsed it back in the November meeting. And the Planning Commission, at their meeting last week, did two things. They determined that the CIP was in conformance with the Comprehensive Plan. Again, that's the role of the Planning Commission in doing that. And they also forwarded recommendation of approval to the Board of Supervisors here this evening. And with that concludes my presentation, and if there are any particular questions about the CIP, I'd be happy to try and answer them, and also to recognize the folks from the agencies who are here with us this evening.
Questions, Mr. Dan.
Just to comment, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to echo something you mentioned, Mr. Reddick, and that was adding the information about changes from the previous chart. I think that's helpful, and you and I have discussed some other alternatives that we may want to look at to make that even more readable. So I just want to thank you for addressing that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
We'll now conduct a public hearing to consider the 2015-2016 Capital Improvements Plan. The Capital Improvements Plan is a prioritized list of the capital projects requested by various county departments and agencies. The plan is created as a component of the 2030 Comprehensive Plan. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against the 2015-2016 Capital Improvements Plan? So would you please come forward, give your name, magisterial district, and launch your comments to three minutes, please.
My name is Tag Grove. I'm the head swim coach of the Winchester swim team, and I'm actually a city resident. But I'd like to speak towards the possibility of building Frederick County Aquatic Center. The possible construction of the Frederick County Aquatic Center would open up an incredibly vast array of water-related activities to the public. The development of the aquatic center would represent a sound investment into our community that would pay dividends for years to come. The aquatic facility can be a wonderful place for the community members to gather and participate in activities that they are already familiar with or engage in activities that they have never tried. An aquatic center offers a little bit of everything, and there are opportunities for everyone regardless of age or experience. The Frederick County Aquatic Center could be a place that every community member could enjoy consistently over an extended period of time. The main benefit of an aquatic center is its versatility. Aquatic centers of today are used for so many different purposes, it serves the interest of a vast majority of our community. Everyone is able to enjoy the aquatic center for this reason. Area residents would benefit physically through improved muscular endurance, strength and balance, improved circulation, and improves the ability to control and maintain a health weight, a healthy weight. In 2012, according to the CDC, more than a third of our children and adolescents were overweight or obese. For some disabled or elderly persons, a sense of freedom as they can move around in the water with little or no pain. Social benefits include a fun way to get a great workout, establishing good friendships, enjoyable even when working hard, and a sport that is safe for all ages. Psychological benefits encourage a positive attitude, a heightened sense of well-being, and increased energy. Swimming is also a stress reducer. The benefits to the community of a new aquatic facility, it would generate revenue, revive the local economy, give kids a place to go and entertain themselves. It's a tourism booster. Property values would increase, attract new businesses and their employees, a place to relax, bringing families together, and it's wholesome, affordable, family entertainment. The aquatic facilities of today are evolving, incorporating in competitive and recreational swimming and wellness programs along with instruction and fitness. The old theory of a six-lane rectangular pool expecting everyone to use the same pool is unrealistic for tiny tots, families, individuals with disabilities, and seniors. As more athletes cross train with water fitness components and more doctors recommend, that's not fair. Real quick, I'm gonna go over. Revenue can be generated through the facility include leisure aquatics and fitness programs that have a good cost-recovery ratio. Community growth should help increase the demand, and participation rates would increase revenue. Pricing is also an important factor, although most aquatic centers are priced reasonably. Cost-sharing options include some form of community partnership used by some aquatic centers. centers. This was most recently done down in Richmond. And also to help the level of debt service, some aquatic centers use fundraising from sponsorships and grants. In closing, aquatic center represents a fantastic opportunity for community members to add incredible resource. By adding an aquatic facility, a community can not only increase the health and wellness of its members, but also increase the camaraderie developed in participation and shared activities. With so many opportunities for instruction, fitness activities...
You need to conclude.
Okay. Decision for an aquatic center be an easy one and incredibly beneficial to all parties involved. Thank you for letting me run a little bit over.
Anyone else? Please try to adhere to the time limit.
I will. Good evening, y'all. My name is Connor Babington, and I swim for Winchester Swim Team and Jameswood High School. Right now, I'd normally be at practice right now from seven to eight-thirty for Winchester. And then right after that practice, I would have to swim eight-thirty to nine-thirty for my high school team. And I wouldn't normally get home till ten o'clock. And due to all the county and city schools, plus Winchester and other activities and lessons, the only way to get pool time is at that time. And this, this deters from all other high school swimmers from wanting to swim for high school since of the late times. And so they can't find the love for swimming as I have. And swimming has become a lifestyle for me and is something that I intend to do into my later years. Swimming has taught me time management, to never quit, and that hard work pays off. Swimming has also sparked my interest in going into the military, and it has given me the confidence and physical and mental strength I will need for when I serve. I believe swimming is the best sport someone can participate in. I have always found great sportsmanship and positive influences. I have reached many goals, and sometimes I wonder if I was able to get more pool time for practice, I could even reach higher goals. The popularity of swimming is rising, and facilities we have now cannot keep pace. Building this new pool will help all the community, from children learning to swim to competitive high school and year-round to seniors swimming. Thank you for your time.
My name is Alex Morrow. I swim for the Winchester Swim Team as well, and I swim for Millbrook High School Swim Team. I don't have the same practice schedule as Connor, high school-wise, but I would also be swimming right now for the Winchester Swim Team. And I wouldn't get home around, till around nine-thirty. And during the high school season, I would have also had afternoon practice from, from three-thirty to four-thirty and then have to turn around and come right back to Winchester Swim Team, taking away time that I could have for my studies for school. And if, if we had more spread out practice times, I could definitely work in times for those if we spread them out and had better times, if we had different pools. One thing that I was talking about earlier with one of the other high school coaches is the inconsistency of, of the practice times is we'll, we'll practice right after school one day, late at night one day, middle of day the other, early morning. And that's just not good for an athlete to do that. Another thing is with the facilities that we have, we don't have the, the greatest resources for weight training and, and swimming as a whole. And this next generation of swimmers, I can already see from my viewpoint as just a teenage boy is gonna be way more advanced and way more, way, way faster and way better people than me and my generation have, have been so far in the swimming. And swimming is growing way faster. And, and I feel like to give this next generation of swimmers the, the best chance that they can to grow as people and to grow as athletes and to just have a good time in their youth, swimming and growing as people, they would need a better facility to facilitate those things. Also, the team, we have to travel, we have traveled about an hour during the regular season, not even the championship season, to find competition for us to race. And if we had a facility here that could harbor those, those faster teams to come here, we could cut down on our costs and gain money through the facility here and also raise faster people and just have a more beneficial experience. Just to finish up swimming, doesn't just make great athletes, it makes great people. And I hope that you can see that and give us, give this next generation of athletes the opportunity they need to enhance that. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Grace Lee from the Stonewall District.
You better pull that down a little bit closer.
Hello, and I'm Kimberly Wannegarres from the Gainesboro District. Kimberly and I are current swimmers on the Winchester Swim Team and both attend Frederick County Middle School as sixth graders. I am twelve and Kimberly is eleven. I'm a third level, a level-three swimmer as well as an age group swimmer. Age groups are state competitions for top swimmers. I swim in the winter four times on average and eight times on average in the summer. Our practices range from an hour and a half to two hours. Our practices have from six to eleven swimmers in one lane.
I'm a level-two swimmer. I swim three times a week on average in the winter and eight times a week in the summer. In the winter, level-two swimmers have from six to fourteen people in one lane, and it gets very crowded. With so many people in one lane, we constantly kick each other and go home with bruises. It's very hard to swim and move due to the fact with so many people are in one lane.
Most age group swimmers practice from about twelve hours a week, and at this point, I'm only swimming six to seven hours a week. With the new pool being built, there will be plenty of new practice times and not, that will not only benefit our swim team, but most of the high school swim teams as well. I'd highly recommend to build a new pool for more practice hours.
Swimming means a lot to me. I tried other sports like soccer and basketball, but they were never the same as swimming. I have, I have been swimming for the past three years year-round. It has been the best thing for me. Swimming has given me confidence and made me stronger physically. I love that it is a sport that I can do the rest of my life.
Swimming is the best sport I ever could've picked. Swimming, I started swimming when I was eight years old, and I've been swimming for three and a half to four years. I started swimming on the Clearbrook Swim Team in the summer. When it came to, when it came, when winter came, we found a new swim team to swim with, Winchester Swim Team. I've gotten stronger physically and when we had to do dry land and exercises. Swimming has influenced me a great deal, and I look forward to swimming in the future.
In conclusion, building the new pool would benefit Kimberly and I and a hundred-plus swimmers on our team. It would also make room so that other people could discover swimming. We recommend building the new pool. Thank you for your time and for listening to us.
Hi, my name is Melanie Mara. I'm from the Redbud District. And we have some great kids, and there's many more of them all throughout the county who would love to swim. And I've been a member of the Winchester Board, the Board of the Winchester Swim Team for the last four or five years now. And in those five years, the beginning, the beginning, we probably had sixty-five kids on the team. This past year, we had a hundred and twenty-eight. And we are turning, we, we had a waitlist of thirty kids. We would love to be able to offer those kids the opportunity to swim. But as you heard, these kids, we have ten and eleven kids in the lane. It's different when you have ten or eleven five-year-olds in a lane, but when you get these older senior kids swimming, ten of those kids in one lane is extremely difficult to have. The high schools, the high school teams, we have three county high schools and one city, city high school who use the same pool. What he, what my son neglected to say is he'll come home at nine-thirty at night, and he'll have to be at the pool at five-thirty the next morning to swim in his high school practice. We're adding a fourth high school for our county. All the county schools have swimming, where are they gonna swim? We don't have the space for that. I know the Frederick Counties, the Frederick County School Board, the school systems, they pay the city to swim. It would be nice to be able to keep those funds in the county. We have a swim meet every summer. Five years ago, we had two-hundred-and-nineteen athletes attend one weekend. This past year, we had five-hundred-and-seventeen. According to USA Swimming, Swimmings, where they do all the budget work and they do all that averages, if you have six-hundred athletes for one weekend, that brings almost three-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars into the county just for the weekend. And the location that the, that the county is looking at putting this new facility is fantastic. Off of five-twenty-two, there's all those hotels right there. All the, the restaurants and everything are just the perfect location. I would hate to have that money going somewhere else. This past weekend, high school states, four-A region, four-A state swimming was down in Charlottesville. Down there, they had three-hundred-and-eighty swimmers, and we have five-hundred-and-eighteen. If we could hold that here, that's a big revenue builder. We could hold our five-hundred-and-eighteen swim meets three, four times a year. As it is right now, we can only do it in the summer because Jim Barnett is the outdoor pool. It's the only pool area big enough. You have also families come in to Winchester to swim in this area. These kids talked about swimming six, six days a week for two hours. Our parents are driving from Loudoun County, they're driving from West Virginia, and they're driving from down in Morin County up to Winchester. They don't leave the town when their kids are at practice, it's too far to go home. So while the kids are in practice for those two hours, the parents are dropping off dry cleaning. They're, they're going grocery shopping, they're doing everything they can, and they're spending funds here. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kathleen Lauer, and I am a member of the Shrendo High School Swim Team. And I'd like to address the fact, I'm not only a swimmer, but I also work as a lifeguard during the summer. And I think that having a new aquatic recreation place would be great because drowning is one of the leading causes of children's deaths. And so having another facility where we could teach lessons and make sure that children aren't as likely to suffer from this fate would be a great thing for the county as a whole to keep our children safe. And during the summer, there's plenty of opportunities for these children to get lessons. But during the winter months and the spring and the fall, when they don't have all the public pools open, there's only one place for them to really go, and that's the Winchester City Pool, which is filled up with times when there's lap swim for adults to swim and there's swim team practice. And so it really narrows the amount of time that they can spend teaching lessons to keep these children safe. And as you can see from looking around at all the, you know, younger children that are here, it, swimming is something that you can do at any age, and it's good to start when you're young and before you're afraid of the water. And so I really think that having a facility for them to go to during the winter where they can jump into the water and not spend months without having the opportunity to swim would be a really great opportunity for them to have. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors. My name's Will Sigler, and I'm from the Shawnee District. Thank you for the opportunity to talk tonight about several reasons why Frederick County would benefit from a multi-use aquatics facility. I will talk in regards to being a coach for the Millbrook High School Swim Team and as a father and a citizen of Frederick County. First, I'll talk about how high school swimming would benefit from the aquatics facility. Like Melanie said, there are four high school swim teams, three in the county, one more coming in the county, and one high school swim, swim team in the city, practicing a one-six-lane pool, which is in the city of Winchester. The pool is also used by city and county residents in their recreational and health needs. So that being said, the time we have to practice is very limited. We get five hours a week for practice time, which ranges from starting times anywhere from five-thirty in the morning to eight PM at night, with a practice time of forty-five minutes to an hour. Five hours is half of what any other high school sporting team practices. With another aquatics facility in Frederick County, we would be able to get our practice time up to the normal high school athletics. We just finished our state swim meet where there were three-hundred-plus swimmers from all over the state of Virginia. If we had a good quality facility in Frederick County, we could possibly host a state meet, which would bring in revenue for local hotels and restaurants. Out of those three-hundred-plus swimmers, the three, and the three Frederick County Public School swim teams had thirteen swimmers out of ninety-plus swimmers from those teams representing this, at the state meet. We had five top-eight finishers and one relay at top-eight out of twenty-two events at our states. With five hours a week of practice, imagine what could happen with more practice time. We could have more of those ninety-plus high school swimmers make it to states and represent Frederick County. This will only be able to happen with a new aquatics facility. Second, as a father and a citizen of Frederick County, I would like to have a nice multi-use aquatics facility to take my family to enjoy. There are so many great health and fitness benefits in aquatics activities, whether competitive or recreational. What I mean by multi-use is that it's not just for competitive swimming, it's also for families to come, take their children, enjoy the benefits of the aquatics. Unfortunately, I've had to take my child out of Frederick County to a multi-use aquatics facility so we can enjoy some time together and so he can get some exercise. With, with this being said, with a healthier and happier families comes more, a more productive community. Thank you for your consideration and the opportunity to improve the quality of lives for our Frederick County residents with the family and friends of a multi-use aquatics facility.
Last call. Here comes somebody.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Knott. I am a teacher at Jameswood High School as well as the head coach at Jameswood High School. I moved down here from Pennsylvania about three years ago, and I didn't even get through my interview before I asked the teachers where the high, or where the county pool was. And the response I got was, "I think they swim somewhere in the city." Nobody really had a response, nobody really knew where anybody was located. I came from a pool in Pennsylvania that had one of the most developed aquatic facilities in the state. It had the height, or the college meets there, it had lifeguard programs, swim lessons, all of the swimming, the Winchester Swim Team, the club team, the high school team, everybody was in there all the time. As a teacher, it was actually integrated into the physical education program. First grade, fifth grade, ninth grade, twelfth grade actually got a couple weeks up at the school in the water, whether it's learning the strokes, learning how to easy lifeguarding techniques in case of emergency and there's nobody around, into my passion personally, water polo, into learning how to canoe. Having the kids in the water, everybody knew where the aquatics facility was, everybody was involved in it. It not only sparked interest, but they had Saturday Community Days where people were in the water coming to visit. Kids were there all the time, people knew where it was. Here, having a facility that the kids, as the head coach, we get forty-five minutes an hour practice, that's not adequate amount of time to really build a high school program. Having an aquatics facility in the county where eventually four high schools can share that pool time, they're not getting back at ten o'clock at night. Personally, I teach AP Chemistry, easy class. My class starts at seven AM. School doesn't normally start until seven-fifty-five. My class starts an hour earlier. I have five of my swimmers that not only are not getting home until ten, ten o'clock, ten-thirty, and then are working on homework because, you know, they never forget until the last second. And then they have to get up and be at the school ready to go for a two-and-a-half-hour AP Chemistry class. That's not adequate. It's not helping the kids academically, it's not helping the kids athletically. And for some of the kids, you're getting back so late that they didn't even swim. They didn't even get to be an athlete at their high school because they didn't have that opportunity because the practice times were so crazy. Having this aquatic center would not only help and benefit the, the schools and the swimmers, but it would benefit the community as well. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Hello, I'm Greg Jones from Stevens City, and I have two daughters who swim in Valley Swim Team Phoenix at Strasburg. The majority of our kids come from Frederick County because there's no eligible, you know, eligible facility for us. The other thing I would point out is, is that if you look at Warrington, which is a much smaller population than this, has built a beautiful indoor aquatic center, and we should think about doing the same. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tia Schultz. I live in Stevens City. Wasn't planning on talking tonight, but listening to everybody, I'm a coach. He mentioned our facility, Warrington. I drive at four o'clock in the morning to have my twelve-year-old daughter swim year-round. On weekends, on average, I spend about four-hundred dollars on hotels, food, and usually that doesn't even include gas because I just, I just bought a car a year ago and have eighty-thousand miles on it. And I put all of them on there with swim meets and traveling. The sport of swimming changed my life. I was a lifeguard. I started coaching at seventeen, taught swim lessons at twelve and thirteen, loved, loved, loved the pool. And if it hadn't been for swimming, I don't think I would've gotten a college education. When I was swimming in high school, I look back and I was like, what am I gonna do with my life? I can't swim forever. Well, maybe I can, at least four more years, let's see about getting into college. Raised my grade GPA because it was barely a C average, I'm not gonna lie to you, was not the greatest student. But because of swimming, I did get my grades up. I went to college, I swam at East Carolina, scholarship athlete, full scholarship, loved it, loved it, loved it. Still go back every time I get a chance and support my college. I support the community in a facility that everyone can grow and learn everything, water aerobics, master swimming. They do, if you can believe this, jazzercise in the water, boot camp in the water. There's probably about twenty different classes that can be held in the water for adults, for kids, and it's not all about competitive, it's about saving their lives. Children drown every day, whether we like it or not. Stevens City, the Parks and Rec, the lake out there, what was that, three or four years ago, boy tried to swim across it, he drowned. That was tragic. Let's not let that happen again. Let's build a facility that these children can learn to swim, everybody across the board, whether you are a high economic or a low economic. Thank you.
All right, seeing no one close the public hearing. It's a pleasure, the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd maybe we adopt the comp plan.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
CIP. I'm sorry.
It's the second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to approve the 2015-2016 We have a motion to approve the 2015-2016 capital improvements plan in a second discussion. Hearing none, Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Haven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye and the motion passes. Next is a public hearing on CPPA one-dash-one-four Blaine Properties Sewer and Water Service Area Inclusion. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, this past year's comprehensive plan amendment request totaled only one, and that was the Blaine Properties, and that's what is in front of us here this evening. It's to, uh, add, if you will, or expand the sewer and water service area around the Blaine Properties. Those properties are located in the Stonewall Magisterial District and are highlighted on the screen with a thick black line. A few orientation there, that's south of Cedar Hill Road, and that's just west of Interstate Eighty-One, north of the Hope Well Road, Clearbrook intersection of Eighty-One. What you see on the screen, again, the properties in the existing sewer and water service area, which runs up and down Interstate Eighty-One, and then heads west, if you will, I might take a second or two and highlight that for you. And again, this is the current boundary of the sewer and water service area, and that is this location here, and it arcs over to Hope Well Road there. The properties for which the request came on in, of course, the Blaine Properties are highlighted there with the general hatch. Cancel out of that and move on if we can. The current land use plan for these properties is designated with a commercial and industrial land use designation. And it's highlighted from this excerpt from the county's long-range land use plan. Again, you can see the industrial land use designation to the west and the commercial adjacent to Interstate Eighty-One and down towards Hope Well Road. When this one came forward, uh, the discussion through the comp plan committee and then at the work session that was held, um, identified the opportunity to look at additional properties within this area when we were looking at the Blaine Properties. So the proposed amendment that you have in front of you this evening for a public hearing not only includes the Blaine Properties, but the adjacent properties, properties to the south that take you to Hope Well Road, and those are of course listed on the screen and in your, in the advertisement here for this evening's public hearing. As a result of that proposed amendment, uh, the map that you see on the screen to your left and is also part of your agenda would be the resorting amendment to the northeast land use plan. And hopefully you can see that the sewer and water service area boundary heads east, excuse me, heads west along Cedar Hill Road and surrounds the Blaine Properties and then moves, moves south to Hope Well Road following property lines. Previously, of course, it arced generally around the intersection, but what was done with this amendment, of course, was try to be consistent with how we do the sewer and water service area, and that is follow distinct property lines. Now, as part of this request, um, the study, uh, the comp plan committee suggested that we clean up, uh, this area a little bit, and just very simply, you might notice that the road alignment is a little straighter than it was before. Uh, the land use designations of the industrial on one side and commercial on the other is consistent with the property lines and the road designation, so generally it cleans up that area only slightly. The resulting change in the sewer and water service area boundary is approximately a hundred-and-forty acres, including the Blaine Properties. And so what we did was provide an additional map which tried to highlight that additional area, and that would be, if I may, again, this general area here is the changed or the addition to the sewer and water service area totaling approximately a hundred-and-forty When this went to the comp plan committee, the comp plan, of course, recommended approval of the adjustments to the land use plan. They also suggested some additional language that would go into the northeast land use plan, and that's part of your agenda too, uh, but to just point out that that recognized the commercial and industrial land uses, the north-south collector road, and that flexibility in the future balance and location of the land uses should be provided. Perhaps more importantly, um, it also included language which reinforced what is in our comprehensive plan, that future applications for rezoning in this area shall adequately address any potential impacts to public facilities, in particular transportation, and shall implement any improvements that are needed. Again, that's for future rezonings that may be in this area. Planning Commission discussed this, uh, back in December, and then, of course, it came to the board, um, and board directed on through the public hearing process. The Planning Commission last week recommended approval of the amendment, which included both the SQUAD boundary change of approximately a hundred-and-forty acres and the text that I just highlighted a moment ago. So this evening, following a public hearing, we're seeking approval of the Board of Supervisors of this amendment to the 2030 Comprehensive Plan. Be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody wish to represent the?
Um, Mr. Gary Oates represents, uh, the Blaine Properties, the initial application, and, um, he's certainly here and available if there are any questions of him. And of course, it expanded beyond.
Okay, do the applicants' representatives wish to speak?
Only if you have other questions.
Okay. Any questions for the applicants' representatives? Thank you. All right, well then we'll conduct a public hearing. This is a public hearing on CPPA zero-one-dash-one-four Blaine Properties Sewer and Water Service Area Inclusion. A change to the SQUAD boundary to affect the following parcels totaling approximately a hundred-and-forty acres, thirty-three dash A dash seventy-eight A, thirty-three dash A dash one-one-three, thirty-three dash A dash one-one-four C, thirty-three dash A dash one-two-three A, thirty-three dash A dash one-twenty-three B, thirty-three A dash one-twenty-four, thirty-three A dash seventy-seven B, and thirty-three dash A dash seventy-two. These properties are currently designated in a 2030 Comprehensive Plan for future commercial and industrial land use. Properties are generally located south of Cedar Hill Road, Route Six Seventy-One, north of Hope Well Road, Route Six Seventy-Two, and west of Interstate Eighty-One, and are located in the Stonewall Magisterial District. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this change in the sewer and water service area boundaries? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. This is Stonewall.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we approve CPPA zero-one-dash-one-four Blaine Properties.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Mr. Supervisor Wells, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I do have one question. I wanted to verify the fact that this land in the future cannot be rezoned to accommodate residential. I think, I thought I read that in there, I just want to verify that that's the case.
Yeah, that's correct. Um, this is not within the UDA, it's within the sewer and water service area, therefore that would only allow commercial, industrial, and institutional land uses on public water and sewer.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, certainly seems any future rezonings here are gonna have significant impacts as far as mitigating the sewer line capacities and pump stations if you read the sanitation authorities', uh, report. That'll be a real challenge for development out there for, depending on usage, but I thought that report was interesting.
The other discussion. Ready to vote. Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Haven.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Chairman votes no, but the motion passes. All right, we're down to board liaison reports, are there any?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, do have a report. The agricultural district, uh, committee met last Thursday. Uh, every five-years, we have to look at the agricultural forestry districts to see if all those are still valid, uh, check on any additions, any deletions. The committee did decide that they would revise the minimum standard for inclusion into those districts to five acres because of the setback limits that are imposed upon the adjoining properties. And so that will be coming before us probably in April or May to review the work and approve the work that has been done.
Questions? Any other board liaison reports? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the citizen comment portion of the meeting. This is the time the board sets aside for citizens to speak to the board about any topic. If there's anyone here who would like to address the board, would you please come forward, give your name, Magisterial District, let me hear comments in three minutes, please. Is there anyone? All right, seeing no one, we'll close the citizen comment portion of the meeting. Board of Supervisors comments.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Collins.
First I want to say, I'm sad to have watched my swim coach walk out from twenty-five-years ago at James Wood. I'm also sad to hear that the practice schedule hasn't changed in over twenty-five-years when I was on the swim team at James Wood. But thank you for that. It's, Mr. Chairman, as many members of the snow and a lot of citizens know, my child, who has a special needs child and has an individual educational plan, uh, goes to a school outside of where we reside. Uh, my wife and I for the last year have been looking to move into my son's school district. That finally opportunity came. Um, so this is gonna be my last meeting on the board as I'm moving across the county into my son's school district to be able to better facilitate his individual educational plan. And, uh, that was a tough decision by my wife and I, but we think it's in the best interest of, uh, of my child. So I thank you, it's been a great five-years. Let me tell you what, how much I've learned. I came in here in two thousand and nine in terrible economic conditions and learned just what a budget looks like when you don't, when you try to spread it as thin as you can, and, um, the experience I've gotten and the mentorship that I have gotten from the members of this board has been extraordinary. I have matured over the last five-years more than I ever thought I would, and the education, level of education I've received over the last five-years has been, um, incredible. And I, I don't really think the citizens of Frederick County really understand the depth and breadth of knowledge that we have on this board and the individuals that serve on it. And it's been my pleasure and I thank you, um, and I wish you all good luck.
Well, speaking on behalf of the board, but not precluding them from speaking later, um, I want to thank you for serving, thank you for your dedication to board work, and I personally appreciate your dedication to the task, and, uh, it's been a pleasure and we'll miss you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to make a comment?
Mr. Chairman, I'd certainly like to, uh, thank Mr. Collins again for his service to the citizens of Frederick County and sharing with us all the, the ins and outs, the ups and downs of being a board member. Um, I certainly think Mr. Collins has brought a certain flair to this body. And, uh, and I appreciate that, I really do appreciate that, and I think he's done a wonderful job and he will certainly be missed by us here on the board and I'm sure the residents of the Red Bud District, and wish you all the best in your future.
Have a TV star.
That's right. I wouldn't want to mention that, but anyway.
Supervisor Fisher.
Can I still get my free legal advice?
Yes. Fine, my phone is still open to all of you for.
Chris, thank you for your service, much appreciated. Well done.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Hess.
I'll, I'll spare, uh, Mr. Collins and the audience, uh, the lawyer jokes that I might, uh, like to tell, but, uh, I, I just want to thank Chris for, uh, uh, speaking his piece and speaking his mind on issues, uh, regardless of whether it was a popular stand or not, and, uh, I respect the position Chris has taken and, uh, I appreciate your service to the county.
Anyone else? Supervisor Haven.
Just, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve with you, Chris, and the citizens have certainly well been served, and, um, you've contributed greatly to, to the success, I think, that, that we have achieved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our very best wishes.
Mr. Chairman, it's all been said, but best wishes, Chris.
Thank you.
Let's give you a round of applause.
It's a different level of red than I think I've ever achieved before. Thank you.
That's the same kind of response you get in court, isn't it?
Yeah.
Standing ovation?
Mr. Chairman, standing adjourned.
We have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, meeting adjourned.